I'd like to call this meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees back to order at 7:45 PM. We will continue on with Agenda Item Two, which is report by Superintendent. Agenda Item Two A is Presentation on Student Achievement: Grading Procedures in CFB. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Chaffin. Members of the Board and the audience here tonight, thank you for being here for this special presentation. We think it's always important for us to inform our community about our student achievement accomplishments as well as practices that we're doing to continue to improve student achievement in this district. You know, I go into schools every Wednesday, I walk around, and it's no secret that I think everyone knows what the goal of this district is. I can walk in a kindergarten classroom and ask a five-year-old, "What's the goal of CFB?" And he'll say, "High achievement for all students," or she will say that. So tonight, when we talk about high achievement for all students, we always do it in connection with aligning our practices that will help reinforce that and make it happen. All the programs that we do, all the curriculum that we do, the training that we do, everything we do in this district is designed specifically to improve student achievement. A grading procedure is no different. It's designed, it's implemented to help improve student achievement. And so tonight, you're going to get a presentation with the district's model following the state guidelines, but as well as our own practitioners' input that we believe will continue to reinforce high achievement in this school district. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to...
Before you do, Ms. Gribner, could you let the record show that Ms. Klein and Mr. Goode have joined us?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Mayer?
Thank you, Dr. Burns. We formed a task force in this district almost two years ago now to look at our grading procedures and to look at a new Senate bill, Senate Bill 2033, that was passed in the summer of 2009. Before I get started this evening, I want to read the names and ask those folks who are here, that were on that task force, actually are continuing to serve on that task force, to please stand, because these professionals have devoted hours of their time reading, study, and I want to recognize their work. Holly Barber, Tanya Garvey, Anne Barnhill, Lynette Blau, Eva Crawford, Patty Fair, Wendy Griffin, Jenna Holt-Hafer, Monica Johnson, Susan McDaniel, Nancy Murphy, Vicki Plaskett, Jody Ruth, Tracy Smith, Lou Soto-Dimas, Wanda Waldewyder, Rachel Weir, Nancy White, Yvette Clark, Deborah Dillon, Erin Frye, Kathleen Julian, Pierre Larson, Gina Leclerc, Holly Millar, Sherri Moore, Cindy Plant, Brooke Bresseli, Ruth Root, Debbie Schugert, Amy Toy, Elizabeth Fargizi, George Ann Warnock, and Kathy Webb. Please help me recognize these educators. I'd also like to recognize principals who will be piloting these procedures next year. I'm going to talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. But with us tonight, we have Ms. Lisa Williams from Davis Elementary. If she'd please stand. We have Ms. Rose Oliveira, and we have Ms. George Ann Warnock. These are going to be three of our piloting campuses. Thank you, ladies, for being here tonight. As always, our focus is on high student achievement, on high achievement for all students. As Dr. Burns reminds us, there are two key words in our objective, and that's "high" and that's "all." By adopting grading procedures which accurately reflect student learning, we are ensuring that we're supporting all students in their efforts. Tonight's presentation will certainly touch on all four of our supporting objectives, but I believe it most aligns with Supporting Objective One, continuously increasing student achievement, and Supporting Objective Four, continuously increasing stakeholder confidence in support of our school system. For I believe, when we have grading procedures that reflect the research and the best thinking in the field on grading procedures, it will build credibility for our system with our Jennifer and Christopher. As I discuss the details in the updated grading procedures, I will periodically refer to Jennifer and Christopher. Why? Because I want to frame this debate, this dialogue around students. Students are why we are talking about this, and I want to keep them in the forefront of our thoughts. The structures we have in place deserve continual review, and grading procedures are no different. Why Jennifer? Well, there are 172 Jennifers in our school district, believe it or not. There are 183 Christifers. So these are names that we see come across various registers all the time. Although the Jennifer and Christopher that I will refer to are not real students, I have known many students just like them. So let me give you a brief picture of who they are. Jennifer is a GT student. She is very ambitious and hardworking. She knows that she will attend the University of Texas and major in biochemistry. She's wanted to go to UT since she was in middle school. She's an athlete in band and serves on the Junior Executive Committee. She is a very focused young lady. Christopher. Christopher is a bright young man, but like many others, has struggled his first two years of high school, due in great part to his lack of effort. He's a good kid. He just does not have the direction or drive many of his classmates have. He lives with his grandmother and works a full-time job after school. He has minimal involvement at school other than attending classes, which sometimes suffer when he is exhausted from work. During this presentation tonight, I plan to share some of the details of the updated grading procedures, not all of them, because we want to get out of here before midnight. There are a lot of details. But the really big details, I'll be sharing. But, as the saying goes, the devil's in the details. So I wanted to make sure that we also talked about the impact of those details. So from time to time, we will tune in and listen to what Jennifer and Christopher have to say about the details of the updated grading policy procedures. The Journey. As I indicated, the journey really began the summer of 2009. That was when Senate Bill 2033 passed, and it had some requirements around grading. It also was a good time for us to meet and just see, evaluate our current procedures. We do this about every eight years in our district. We get together and we look at our practices and make sure they are aligned with the best thinking in the field. And I have had the honor and privilege to lead district-wide work in grading before. The task force that was formed was made up of 14 elementary teachers, 14 secondary teachers, and seven administrators. The teachers represented foundation courses as well as enrichment courses, special education, bilingual, and gifted programs. Holly Barber and I have co-chaired this task force, and Holly's leadership has been absolutely invaluable. The task force met multiple times in the last two years, read about and discussed issues of grading, and over a long period, ultimately created Draft One of an updated grading procedures. Draft One was vetted at schools with feedback cards submitted by staff members, and the task force read that feedback and made adjustments to Draft One and created Draft Two. The district will be piloting Draft Two, as I indicated earlier, at five campuses next year. Consequently, we've also talked to students from at least one of those campuses, RL Turner thus far, and we've talked with parents from four of the campuses. And the meetings have gone well. We've been able to answer all questions and concerns parents have had, and the comments have been positive. I want to take a minute and talk about the people that we have read and studied over time. Who are the experts in this field, anyway? And the list of names you see on the board are very familiar to us. Thomas Guske was in our district in December. On December 1st, we had many administrators and teacher leaders who attended his session. We invited our PTA council to that session, had many of our parents represented there. And he teaches at Georgetown University in Kentucky. He's authored several books and numerous articles on the issue of grading and assessing. Let's see here. Ken O'Connor will be in our district on June 8th, also talking about this, an internationally-known expert who's also authored many books, and his work really served as a primary guide for the task force. Robert Marzano has not been in a district-wide presentation, but we had him at Creekview High School in 2002, and also talking about grading, and he has done extensive writing and researching in this area. I do not consider myself to be an expert in grading. I'll just say that right up front. I reserve that designation for the names on the screen. These are the researchers. These are the people who are writing the books. However, I do consider myself to be knowledgeable in this area. It's been of particular interest of mine for over 20 years, and if there's an article out there, I try to read it. If there are other experts, however, that we have missed, or that the viewing audience are bored, that we would like us to review their work, we're more than happy to do so, because this is a work in progress. We want to begin with the detail regarding purpose. What is the purpose of a grade? Because once you make a decision about purpose, that guides the rest of your decision makings. If you can come to consensus around what is the purpose of report card grades, semester grades, and final grades, then that serves as a guide for other decisions. If you don't have that, you have a tendency to have the whim of the day and the opinion of the day rule. And we want our practice to be based on thoughtful decisions and on sound and educational This is the purpose statement that the task force designed. The primary purpose of awarding grades is to communicate student achievement in relation to the state standards and district curriculum. We got a lot of consensus around this particular purpose, certainly from the task force, but not only from the task force. Because when we went and vetted the first draft of the grading procedures, this is a question we also ask all of the campuses throughout the district. And there's great consensus around this statement. It is about learning and demonstrating evidence of learning. But, once again, the devil's in the details. We can agree that it should be about learning and mastery of learning, but just how do you arrive at that mastery and communicate that grade? Whoops. Okay. The next detail, and this is a big detail, and we're going to stay with it for a little while, and that is around the whole notion of formative and summative grades. What evidence should be included in a student's grade? Earlier, I've mentioned that we basically have tweaked our grading procedures. And I use the word tweak because I think it connotes minor change and not major change. And that's how I feel the grading procedures really represent. We have made some changes, but nothing is brand-new that we haven't thought of and haven't been working with for years. And this is an example. We have formative and summative grades that are averaged into our grading procedures right now. Currently, 40% of a student's grade is formative assessment and 60% is summative assessment. The updated grading procedures are recommending a shift there, where the 25% will represent, a formative assessment will represent the grade, and 75% of summative. Interestingly enough, this district used to be 25-75%, and that's been, in the early 90s, that's what we were, but then we made a shift and added more formative evidence. The one thing that I need to stress, because there's been various comments from various people, community, parents, teachers alike, regarding, "Well, what does this really mean to make this shift?" Well, what it means is, we will have a more rigorous standard for a grade. Not less, but a higher standard for a grade. Because when you weight the grade more on summative evidence, it is a higher standard, because you're actually grading mastery, not things leading up to mastery. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more, so I want to step back and make sure we have clarity around these concepts. First of all, formative assessment is practice. It is practice, things like homework, daily assignments, quizzes, all those kinds of things that's preparing students for the summative exam. Notice I said that it is, you know, something that we do in preparation for summative, so we know it's important. We think formative assessment is incredibly important. We think it should be graded, but we think it should be used for its ultimate purpose, which is feedback. Feedback to the student on how he or she is actually progressing and what he or she's learning on their path for mastery. So regardless of whether you graded it or not, or computed it in the final grade or not, it all should be graded, and it all should have feedback on it. A formative assessment is formally for learning. It's helping the teacher and the students make adjustments and giving them information on what they need to do to continue to learn and get ready for the summative assessment. There are two types of formative assessment, formal and informal. Informal assessment is the kind of information that teachers get in the classroom when they ask questions, when they do a thumbs-down, "Do you agree? Do you disagree?" All those kinds of things are considered, listening to student conversations, all those things are considered formative assessment. Formal formative assessment is when instruction is actually stopped, and there's an assessment given, a quiz, work on an assignment. That's considered to be formal formative assessment. Both are equally important, but to perform well on the formative assessment is critical. Summative assessment is assessment of learning, and it's designed to measure student achievement. What have they actually learned and mastered? It's looking at a certain part in time, and it's made up of things like major tests, projects, and performances. Here's where it gets a little complicated, you know? Like Dr. Burns says, that movie, "It's Complicated." Well, this is complicated. But it's really necessary for us to understand all the issues surrounding formative assessment, and why the researchers usually recommend that you don't count it at all, but if you are going to count it, that you count it a very small percentage. And here's why. Here's the first thorny issue, compliance. We've all known that there are some grades that go in the gradebook that may not have what we would call a direct link to learning. For example, has anyone sent a box of tissues to school to get 100 at the beginning of school? Signing a progress report and having evidence you turned it back in, you get 100. Or signing a syllabus, that was one actually that I hadn't generated, but when I met with the Turner students, they generated for me. Turning in homework, get 100 or 0, just turn it in. Those are examples of compliance grades. We know why teachers ask students to do that. They feel they aren't going to comply if you don't do it. But they have nothing to do with a grade, absolutely nothing to do with learning. And so that's one of the thorny issues that we're trying to make sure is not computed into a student's report card grade in CFB. The second issue is about grade inflation. And this was a little trickier to understand, but we have text statements and standards that we teach to. And often, there's a lot of what we call scaffolding to get to that actual text statement or student expectation. So we will be giving easier assignments, exams, quizzes, building background knowledge and practice to prepare that student for that summative exam. Let me give you an example. In English Language Arts at the high school level, there's a student expectation that states, "Students will be able to explain how dramatic conventions enhance dramatic text." Students will be able to explain how dramatic conventions enhance dramatic text. Well, in order for students to be successful doing that, they're going to have to understand monologues, soliloquies, dramatic irony. The teacher may step back, give tests for students to define those, give them examples of text for those to locate those. Those are good scaffolding, teaching, and assessment experiences that a teacher should do. But they're at an easier level than the actual student expectation of showing how these conventions actually enhance dramatic text. So by the very nature of the scaffolding in the practice, they may be somewhat easier, and therefore, they may create some grade inflation, if you have a lot of those easier assignments in your gradebook. The other thorny issue regarding formative assessment is about extremely difficult concepts that students sometimes may really struggle with, whether it be through homework, whether it be through quiz and a concept. For example, in pre-calculus, there's a text statement that reads, "The student uses sequences and series as well as tools and technology to represent, analyze, and solve real-life problems." One of four student expectations around that text statement reads that the student will be able to describe limits of sequences and apply their properties to investigate convergent and divergent series. This is a concept that my math coordinator tells me is introduced in pre-cal, but is key and important for student understanding through calculus. This is sometimes really new information for kids, is probably very complex information. So at the formative assessment stage, when they're just learning and they're just practicing, they may bomb those quizzes, those homework assignments completely. And so that also impacts. But what's important here is not what they're earning and how they're performing while they're practicing and learning, it's what can they do at the end of learning, at the end of instruction. We do not want to punish students for mistakes. We want them to know, "You're going to make mistakes along the way, but it's what you do at the end of instruction, and whether you can prove you've mastered it." What's the implication of Senate Bill 2033 on this issue about mastery? Well, here's what it states. "We must require a classroom teacher to assign a grade that reflects the student's relative mastery of an assignment," you know, or grade. We are trying to look at what you've really mastered, not grade your practice, as most of our researchers will also agree to. Okay. What do Jennifer and Christopher think about formative and summative assessment? Well, let's listen in. Here's Jennifer. Yes?
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
What does relative mastery mean?
Well, that's the law, and so what we have to do in the district is try to interpret what that means. What we've, and we have to use what we call our reasonableness test, you know, relative mastery, I think, would mean that you have earned a certain level on assessment. Is that going to be 70? Is that going to be 75? Is that's going to be 80? What do we consider to be good mastery of a concept? We touch on that a little bit more here, Ms. Watson, when we talk about reassessment, because we've tried to define that very thing in our district and through the task force.
Weird word to use, but mastery.
I think it's what you can show evidence on, and the percentage of correct or accurate information.
Ms. Watson, the people who passed that law probably couldn't tell you what it means either.
There's going to be some tweaking of 2033, we've been told, so we'll keep our eye out for that as well. Okay, Jennifer, what do you think of all this? Jennifer states, "I want my grade to represent more summative evidence. I want the grade to be credible and for colleges to know that this is the knowledge and skills that I've demonstrated on tests, projects, and performances. There is no inflation. I can compete with any student from any district. And since I know that Plano High Schools and Carroll High Schools also have 25% formative and 75% summative mix determine their grades, I feel I can say that my grades are based on the same high standard." Jennifer's very informed of what the grading policies are around the metroplex. "Plus, it upsets me when students get grades on easy stuff or just because they turned something in. That doesn't mean they've learned anything. I want my grades to communicate the same learning that the SAT does and that my end-of-course exam does, what it shows what I have learned." Okay, Jennifer, we know you're a highly focused young lady. What does Christopher think? He says, "I'm not really sure about this shift."
Someone's logging in on this issue?
That's Christopher. He says, "I'm going to have to really improve my test grades, and this will probably mean my grandmother is going to be on me when she sees the new report card, because I heard it's not only going to show my academic grade, but it's going to show my formative assignment grades plus my summative assessment grades. She will be on me about getting my homework in and all that. But I don't want to pass a course and not be able to pass tax or end-of-course exams, because I hear they are going to be very hard. It doesn't do me any good to pass my class but not be able to graduate because I can't pass the state tests." And that happens. And that's going to be happening more and more when we get to the end-of-course exams, and they're very, very rigorous. We're going to have to justify, "How do I have a good grade in the class, but I can't pass the end-of-course exam? Maybe it's because we have things in the grade we wouldn't have in the grade. I want to get to walk the stage, so if this means my grades will keep the pressure on me, and I'll actually learn more, then I guess I'm for it." Next detail, reassessment. I guess we've all heard this adage or this axiom, "If at first you don't succeed, try, try again." But evidently, that applies to some areas of our life, but in public schools, not as much. However, once again, this is an area that we've been working with for a long time. I remember when Carla McGee and I sat at a table at RL Turner and worked on reassessment procedures for that school. That's how long it's been that we've been working with reassessment. This is not a new notion. It's just that what procedures do you put down around that notion? Well, where do we get an opportunity to try, try again? The SAT, take as many times you need to. ACT, again, many times. The end-of-course exams that are coming. Students are going to get multiple assessment opportunities. The GRE, the Graduate Record Exam, one that's near and dear to Mr. Shore's heart, the LSAT. The MCAT, you know, we get to take that more than once, if we want to take that more than once. CPA, bar exam, medical boards, Microsoft certifications, teacher certifications. Our teachers in this district, they want to become ESL certified, they get an opportunity to take that test. If they don't pass it, they get to go take it again. We don't deduct their pay. We don't fire them. We understand that learning takes time. That's one of our principles of learning. Engineering exams, even pilot license. My stepdaughter's a pilot. She flew commercially for United, and she tells me, "You get to go up in the air and you can not pass something flying, some little something. You get to do it again. You get to try again." But let's talk about what the Senate bill has to say about this, because that was one of the things we wanted to look at and help revisit. Actually, the Senate bill states that we must allow a student a reasonable opportunity, there's that word, reasonable, we all get to interpret what that means.
Is it "may" or "must"?
"May." "May allow a student a reasonable opportunity to make up or redo a class assignment or examination for which the student received a failing grade." Now, we believe reassessment is good educational practice. So we've been doing it, but how have we been doing it is the question, and let's revisit that. And what does reasonable mean? Here's what we've been doing in our procedures. At the secondary level, six through 12, the procedure currently reads that students will be allowed an opportunity to reassess if 40% of the students fail the test. We believe, after much dialogue, that this isn't about whether my friends fail. This is about my own personal learning as a student. When it says "a student," I believe it's talking about an individual. And at the elementary level, it's 30% of the class. So we felt like it was time to revisit that. Another key idea and dialogue that the task force had was this whole notion about a student who's failing getting an opportunity. We had considerable dialogue about, "Is it fair for a student who gets a 68 or a 69 to have an opportunity to reassess, but a student who has a 70 does not?" Because we talked again about that idea, Nancy, that you brought up, and that's this whole idea about what is mastery? And so what we determined was, mastery of students who make an A or a high B, we feel like they have the knowledge and skills to proceed to the next unit of study and be successful. Students who are hovering in those 70s, we know a lot of students who are barely getting by on their summative, and their formative is what's allowing them to pass and be successful. So if you're in the 70s, you understand 70%, 72, 74, we believe, we want you to go back into your assessment, find out what you did wrong, work on that, and retake that assessment, because you probably don't have the depth of understanding we want you to have to be successful in the next unit. And it has a way of compounding over time. So the task force decided that we would look at students who made a low B or a C and also give them the option of reassessment. You know, we want to encourage it. We can't make them, but we want to encourage that. So what have we determined to be reasonable regarding reassessment? And here's what we have crafted. First, you have to be eligible- First, you have to be eligible for reassessment. And what does that mean? That you must have completed all your formative assessments. So if you haven't done the homework, if you haven't done the, the quiz, if you haven't done the assignment that, that you've been working on over time, anything that your teacher has assigned to you that's been aligned with that summative, you have to have done that, completed it to her satisfaction or his satisfaction. And so that's what you have to do to be eligible. 85 is the highest reassessment grade you can earn. Remember, we've kind of pushed the, so the students are going to get the As and the high Bs the first time. They're the only people that are going to be able to get the As and the high Bs on the report card for class rank and all those things. I will tell you that this particular issue is not aligned with what the experts say. Because what the experts say is, when you reassess whatever grade you earn, you should get credit for. That's basically what they say. And I will also say to you that we agree with them, and many people on the task force, you know, really agree with them. But there, believe it or not, there is this really practical side of me. And it's called being in a high school principal chair for 13 years and working with top 10% in colleges. I want to move us in the direction that we need to go, but I also understand that, that we have to think through the system and structures as they are. If we said, everybody's eligible for retests and everybody can have whatever grade they earn, Jennifer, who might get a 99, will be the first one at our door. We will have kids fighting, because I, I know students who fight for a quarter of a point, tenth of a point, you know, whatever. And that's really not what this is about. This is ensuring high-level learning for everyone. Plus, we do not, we feel like that would be getting into some area that would be problematic. So this is better than we've ever had it before. It may not be perfect, but it gives a lot of kids an opportunity to haven't had one. We've had a reassessment procedure for failing students. The students who are knocking it out of the park are going to knock it out of the park no matter what we're doing here. They're very focused, they're Jennifers. But what about the student in the middle? We have lots of programs for kids on both ends, but what about the kid in the middle? This gives him a chance and gives him enough incentive to say, "I want to go back in and I want to study some more." We want them to do that on their own. They don't have as much incentive as we'd like, and so we hope that this will encourage them to want to do that. But ultimately, it's about the learning. It's about what they will learn when they take the reassessment. You can only take a reassessment one time. We have, we require six summative grades through a semester plus the final semester exam. That's three each nine weeks. There'll only be one opportunity to reassess, but we will give one opportunity. We know that initially, there was a lot of misinformation about that, but in draft one and draft two, it always said, one time. It's not going to be the same test. It's not about, I'm going to take one test, I'm going to keep taking it till I know everything on the test. That's not what it's about either. But it is going to be about the concepts that I missed. Reasonable timeframe. A lot of this will depend on the teacher, but we have said, you know, we would expect that should happen within, you know, five calendar days, or not count, seven calendar days, five school days. But we are going to have a lot of discretion with the teacher because, you know, life happens. Either they're not available or the student's not available. There's some legitimate reasons. That will be a lot teacher-driven. And the semester exam is not eligible. That's the Super Bowl, the semester exam. It will not be subject to reassessment. One of the things I think everyone can agree with is that time is one of our most precious resources. Whether you're a CEO of a Fortune 500 company, or whether you're a student sitting in Algebra I in ninth grade, time is very important. What has happened to us and what is happening is that sometimes students struggle right at the beginning. They are not successful. They failed some things, and guess what? They can do the math. They realize, there's no way I could pass this class. So what do they do? They sit. They sit until it's a new semester. And sometimes they sit until it's a new year, because they didn't get enough first semester to understand to be successful second semester. We do not have time to waste any time in the classroom for students sitting because there's no way mathematically we can figure it out. What we have to do is take that student and say, "Look, you weren't successful. But if you work hard and you come in," because one another requirement for reassessment is, "You have to do something additional to get the opportunity to reassess. You come in for a tutorial, your teacher gives you an additional assignment, because we've got to work with you on what it is you demonstrated you still don't understand. But if you do that hard work and you come in and you do that, you're going to get another shot." It has been said that hope is oxygen for the soul, and we need to breathe some hope into our grading procedures, because there are a lot of them that are pretty disengaged right now. Mr. Shore?
Dr. Mayor, assuming the student satisfies the other bullet points, is there a grade that they get on the first test that if they score a certain grade, they are precluded from reassessing?
Yes. The student has to get a low B or C or fail.
So in other words, a student who gets an 84?
Can reassess if he wants to try to reassess for that small amount. We don't anticipate a lot of that, because students are also going to say, "Is this going to be worth this to me?"
But an 85 precludes you from reassessing?
Yes, that's right. I don't know how many of you followed the Education Nation special that went on NBC in the fall. But one thing that caught my attention one evening, I was watching TV, was the classroom that they showed. They showed some teaching in a classroom, and it was in Finland. And for anyone who follows international assessments, you will know that Finland pretty much knocks it out of the park on everything. Whether it's reading, math, whether it's the Tims, whether it's the PISA, if they're not number one, they're in the top three, they're always very high. Shanghai China has taken that spot over most recently, but they're always very high. And here's what struck me. As they showed that classroom with direct instruction, there was another teacher in the classroom, and what they explained was that as soon as that student isn't understanding, he's put over here to work with one-on-one tutoring until he understands. What we have to understand is, we're competing with people who have safety nets that they don't let kids sit for two months if your grade doesn't average to a passing grade. If you don't get it, we bring you back in. And we're going to have to think like that as well. It's a new day. We are giving, we have online courses and online instruction where they automatically have safety nets, where they keep giving formative assessments and tutorials until you get it right. And it doesn't matter what's going on with anybody else. It's about you and your learning. And when you get it right, you can prove mastery evidence, move on. That's going to be competing with public schools. We've got to rethink some things. Okay. What did Jennifer and Christopher think about reassessment? Well, here's Jennifer. "Well, most of the time, I will not need a reassessment because I make As the first time I take a test." But, she says with all confidence, "But there was that one time last year when I had two pre-AP tests on the same day, math and science no less, a soccer game the night before, and project due for world experience. I made a 78 on a pre-AP chemistry test, and I would have loved to have had an opportunity to bring it up to an 85. It wouldn't have been my usual A, but it would have been better than a lowly 78." We've all known high-performing AP students who load themselves up, and they've got a rigorous schedule, and they're also involved in everything in the school, and they usually perform very well. But sometimes their activities, there really are only 24 hours in the day for everyone, and the sky really falls when they don't get their A. This is for them too. They'll have an advantage, to take advantage of it as well. What does Christopher think? "I like the idea of reassessment because I seem to mess up on tests. But now I have to do all of my work in order to get to retest. That's right. Man, that's a bummer. But if it will help me do better on the next test, maybe it'll be worth it. I will have to see about my job, though. I start it right at 3:30. If I'm going to retest, I'm going to have to have some days when I don't have to report to work until at least 5 o'clock, because my teacher told me most of the reassessment would be done before or after school. But I know that what I really need sometimes is a second chance. Most of the reassessment will occur outside the school day. We know that." Yes, Nancy?
What if the child scores an 80 the first time?
Mm-hmm.
75 the second time?
We'll take the higher of the two grades. In addition to some of the changes in grading procedures, we also are restructuring the report card. Because through this dialogue, one of the things that we determined was, it's very important to give parents more information. We may know the formative assessment grade and the summative assessment grade and what that means. We're not communicating that to parents, and we need to do so. We also want our grade to be based on evidence of learning. So that means it's not about behavior. But we know your behavior, your conduct is important to your grade. We're going to pull that out, and we're actually going to give that an A, B, C, or F. Same thing with effort. We know that effort is very important, and we have designed rubics around conduct and effort to give a student an effort grade. I've recommended and will recommend to, to George Ann, we've talked about this, that when R.L. Turner writes letters of recommendation to college, every letter should mention what the student's effort grade is, because it's equally important to that academic grade. What you see on the screen, we couldn't put everything from the report card on the screen, it wouldn't fit, but I want to give you kind of the, the most important piece. And that is that we're going to have an academic grade, and that is what the rank, that is what, report cards, all of that will be based on that academic grade. But we're also going to communicate to parents, what's your student's formative average? In other words, what are they doing on the practice? What are they doing on the homework, on the assignments? How's all that figuring in? And then, what are they doing when it's time to say it's test time? What are the summative grades that they showed you that they know? And then, of course, these other grades. So let's look at a couple examples here. We're going to look at Jennifer's, let's see, I think, pre-AP, pre-calc class, and let's see how she did. Which got a 95. With Jennifer, she probably won't be satisfied with that, but we think that's a pretty good grade. But you can see she was slightly below in her formative assessment, not much though. So what we hope that means is that that formative assessment, the feedback she received, allowed her to be even more successful on the summative. Of course, her conduct's great, her effort's great, and she's almost never absent or tardy, right? Let's look at Christopher's first nine weeks in Algebra II. Grade not as good, but interesting nonetheless. He struggled with some of his formative. So the feedback that he received, we hope, really did help him improve his summative average. But look here. He started doing pretty well on the, on the exams, and he comes out the 75 average. Conduct is okay, effort still not where it needs to be. We hope to work with that, and he is struggling sometimes with absences and tardies. I want to quickly mention something that I think is important as we design any structure, any of our work in education, and that's the research on motivation. The administrative team and secondary teacher leaders this year have studied a conduct, a study conducted by the International Academy of Education on motivation. The research resulted in a synthesis of principles of motivation that emerged from the research into the effects of motivational practices on school learning. The findings are really too lengthy for me to go through here with you, but certainly I would, I would be glad to share them. But there's one that I believe is, that we found that's particularly germane to grading. And that's this whole notion about failure. Sometimes we hear people say, "Well, they fail, that'll teach them a lesson, and then they'll understand they can't fail again." Man, we've kind of always bought that a little bit. You give them a zero, that'll motivate them to know they don't want to get another one. Well, guess what? That's not what the research says. And guess what else? I've been, this is my 31st year in the district, that's not been my personal, professional experience either. But here's what it says. Failure's not a motivator. So if there's research out there that indicates it is, again, we're open to it, we want to read it, we want to know everything. But what we've found is, it's not. Who benefits from this? Really, everyone. Jennifer, Christopher, students who are struggling more than Christopher, and everyone in between. This is, this is a win-win and a good thing for kids. Piloting campuses. Rosemead Elementary, Davis Elementary, Field, Turner, and Early College High School. Really, Early College High School, absolutely, we, we did some, you know, grading and where they got to select one for not agree and 10 agree. Early College High School on draft one, which was considerably different than draft two, but even on draft one, they were like at a 10. And you know, I talked to Rosie about that. She goes, "Sheila, we've already got them in college. We know what they have to do. They're going to have to do this, sitting in the college courses we have them in right now." Okay? So they were like all on board. As the board is aware, we recently received feedback from the district's employee opinion survey that TASB conducted. And in the curriculum instruction service and support feedback, there is an item that states, "I understand achievement standards and grading policies." In 2009, we received an 82% that rated this and I agree, a strongly agree statement. In 2010, 97% rated this statement with an I agree or strongly agree. The commentary from TASB about this was, "The statement about achievement standards and grading policies show the greatest change in levels of agreement." That's not saying that everybody agrees on everything, but it's saying they understand it. The dialogue that we've had in this district, although it's not been easy, and it's one of those topics that, you know, everyone has an opinion, it's been good for us as a profession. It's been good for us to have descending voices, agreeing voices, because this is an important structure. Is it the most important structure? I don't know if it's the most important structure. The teachers, standing in front of them and working with them is the most important. But the bottom line is very important, important, and we, those students deserve us to get it right. They deserve us to rethink what we're doing from time to time. As Alvin Toffler has stated, "The illiterate of the 21st century will not be those who cannot read and write, but those who cannot learn, unlearn, and relearn." That's why we examine our work always. That's why we continually push the envelope. That's why we are leaders of learning in CFB. We understand this statement. We read this statement a lot in our district. We read it at board meetings. We read it in meetings that we have in, in district. It's very important to us. It means something to us. But for students to really graduate college or workforce-ready, we believe that we are going to have to have a very high standard, a very rigorous standard, and we believe grading is part of that. This is a more rigorous grade level. Someone said, "Well, this may not mean that, no, kids aren't going to fail. There may be more failure." That's right. There may be more failure. But when parents get that report card, and when anyone from CFB looks that report card, they're going to know it's based on very credible summative information. And there are going to be no hundreds for Kleenex in the, in the, in the grade. So thank you for your attention, and I would entertain any questions you might have.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Mayor? Mr. Goode?
Well, I was just going to, in a minute.
Ms. Klein?
How often are the grading procedures reevaluated?
About every eight years. I led the last one. We didn't change much.
Probably not frequently enough, Ms. Klein.
I was just curious if there was a, is it, what, is it only when the Senate bill gets passed that they get reevaluated?
No, not always. We, we reevaluated them, I think the last time was 2002 or 2003, right, right around there. I think it was 2002.
And then also, I'm just curious, what are the differences in general between draft one and draft two?
The differences between draft one and draft two is that we, in draft one, we recommended that the entire grade be based on summative evidence. And although we had a lot of folks agree with that, it really makes people skittish because we've had a, a system in place forever where we've given a grade for everything, because we think they won't do it without that. But here's what we have to understand. We're the adults that shape the behavior and beliefs of our sis, of our children. We are, we have, I say this with all loving kindness, but we've created the monster, and now we have to feed the monster. We need to rethink some of that. And so that was one major change. The other change was, you know, reassessment, it really wasn't much change at all. We just added more specific language to make our intent clearer. Those are the two major ones.
Thank you.
Mr. Goode?
Mr. Goode's been waiting.
Actually, it's not a question. I want to make an observation. I think it's relevant. I pretty much live the formative, summative assessment every day of my life, because in the fields of science and engineering, that's what we do. And I can make a direct analogy, and if you'll just allow me. We have a customer with certain expectations, what a We have a customer with certain expectations what a finished product's going to look like. We go through specification reviews, equivalent to your compliance, then we go design reviews, which is equivalent to your concepts, and then we go back and look at product adherence, which tells us about the mastery of your grade. Then we start testing, which is your summative, one of the summatives. And then we come back, unfortunately, and have to begin a redesign because we did not meet the expectations of the customer. So we go through this whole process again, come back again, go through iterations, finally, we get a final delivery product that the customer is satisfied with.
That's your final exam.
Now, will it be 100%? Absolutely not, because we went through those iterations because we could not get there. Bottom line is this. When my superior looks at me and says, "Pay raise, promotion," it is predicated upon these steps we just went through, which is the grades that the student receives. So I see this process as, it's the real world.
It's the real world.
This is what I live with every day.
It's the real world. But our grading procedures in this district, state, and nation really reflect what we're doing. I don't know, I've been in the profession over 30 years, so, I mean, it's longer than that, 40, 50 years, we haven't changed. It's time we look at this.
Mr. Shore?
Dr. Mayer, I think I have two questions. It is my understanding that there are 35 members of this task force. How did the task force or the committee come about reaching a decision as to what's included in the grading procedures that you're presenting to us today? If I'm not making myself clear, was there a vote taken on each substantive portion of this? And if not, how was it determined that this was to be brought to us?
Well, first of all, we didn't start from scratch. We started with our current procedures in front of us, okay? As we evaluated our current procedures, we had dialogue about, do we still agree with this? Or is the information and the research from the experts, does it align and agree with this? And if it didn't, we literally sat, and Holly Barber would sit and, and start typing, and we would reword and rework different sections of that. So it was through consensus, there was not a voting where people raised their hands.
I guess it's that, okay, it's the general consensus of the task force that we do this, and if you didn't hear somebody jumping up and shouting, "Nay," that it was included.
Yes, but let me just say this about this group. We met often enough, we had enough deep dialogue, we became familiar enough that if anyone wanted to say anything, everyone was saying things. In fact, we would kind of go around the room, anybody, you know, and ask. So I think they were comfortable, if they objected, let us know.
My, my last question, I hope, is, was there some minority position that a lot of people took that wasn't included in this? And if that's the case, why was that rejected? And so I guess what I'm asking is, what was the most popular thing that didn't carry the day that wasn't included in this?
Well, actually, I would say that that probably occurred between draft one and draft two. Because the task force was very committed to the notions in draft one. They really wanted to go with complete, simply summative. And I will say to you, I kind of was a little down after I met with the task force when I came back and said, "Look, we've got to look," we all read all the feedback from, from teachers, you know, we have feedback from, well, I don't know how many teachers we have, 1,700, 1,800 teachers, when I said, "Really, we've got enough concern with the critical mass, we've got to rethink this, and let's move us a step toward that, but I don't know if we can put our spear in the sand here." And they were kind of, "But we know this is the right thing to do."
When, when they said, "We know this is the right thing to do," what was the, the thing that they knew was the right thing to do? What was, what were they referring to?
Summative, they want to base the grade on summative evidence.
Let me tell you what I'm hearing then. I'm hearing that the task force was of the opinion that the grade ought to be based 100% on summative.
I would say overall, that's a fair assessment.
But that because there was popular feedback opposed to that, that the task force, for lack of a better term, capitulated to some popular feedback.
I don't know if I would use that exact word. What I feel like we did was compromise. And we understand that, what, when we went, I went out to a couple of-
Why don't we go 87.5 and 12.5%?
Well, let's make this easy math.
Well, then why don't we do 100% zero?
Yeah. Well, we went, I went to some campuses, and here's what part of the dialogue was. You know, can we take a smaller step? Instead of going from 40% to zero, could we think of something in between? And, and we work in a system where we want to be able to lead the critical mass to where we need to go. Now, having said that, that's also at the stage where we read comments, because we read every card, I read them all multiple times, on ass, suggesting a pilot. And that's a really good idea, as you know, that's in our district leadership work, it's good strategy. If these piloting campuses come back, we're, I'm going to be meeting with them all next year, they're going to be giving feedback, they're going to have a big voice in what's working and not working with this, and what recommendation will we have?
Okay, one more question. Was there any consideration to having 25%, 75% in third grade, 20%, 80% in fourth grade, 15%, 85% in fifth grade, 10%, 9% in sixth grade, and when you hit the big time, it's 100% zero percent?
There was dialogue about that, because as we've researched grading practices all across the nation, and Holly, I think that's a fair statement, is it not, all across the nation? We do see some evidence of people doing, having a different mix at elementary, middle, and high, with of course, high being the most rigorous.
Sure.
But when, when we posed that to the task force, the elementary people there said, "Absolutely not." They said, "Absolutely not. We want to keep the same high standard. We're, we're not going to start this right now." So, and, and, you know, like Lisa Williams says, "And we work with our kids, we'll get them there." So that was, that was discussed, but it was vetoed.
Thank you.
Could I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
This is kind of a, as you know, I, I think in just two terms, yes and no. Was it ever suggested, and I'm thinking of my four children and how different they learned, that of a 50/50? And this is where my thinking comes from. I have at least two children who used the formative, all the assignments, did beautifully on them, had 100% on all the formative assignments, and they weren't bringing tissues to school. I mean, that, you know, they were true formative assessments. And then they froze up on tests, and final tests, never did well, even in college, didn't do well on final tests, but did very well on all of the formative assignments that were presented. That would be a very unfair for, a 75/25 would be very unfair for that type of student. And I'm talking about, I have four children, and two learned one way and turned, two learned another. I mean, two were fine test takers. So what, had that ever been considered?
We did not consider 50/50, because that would really be a less rigorous percentage than what we have now.
If you were, used the formative assignments in the correct way, rather than the Mickey Mouse things that you mentioned, I would think that it would be fair.
Well, here's some of the dialogue that we did have. Because I had a teacher that we, he and I had a discussion about this, that, you know, I may not have a good test taker. Well, first of all, in most of our courses, they take more than just major tests for summative grades. We have project-based learning, we have presentations, so that's also in the mix as far as the grade. But here's the real important thing to keep in mind. Students are going to have to pass 12 rigorous end-of-course exams to get to graduate. If you're not a good test taker, it is up to us and our responsibility to make you a good test taker, because otherwise, you're not going to get out of school. When your kids went to school, Nancy, high-stakes testing wasn't in its zenith. It is now. It's here, and it's here to stay. And it's up to us to help students work through that so that they can demonstrate evidence of their learning. That's the real bottom line.
Ms. Klein?
I've also observed that colleges grade totally differently than they did when I was in college.
That colleges, I'm sorry, Nancy?
They grade diff, you know, they only have the two or three exams a semester-
Right.
-in college.
I think we've all experienced the midterm and final, yeah.
Anyone else? Good report.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mayer. Well, if I could just say one more thing, you know, I believe the DNA of this district is continuous improvement. So rest assured that the staff out there, after they pilot, they'll find ways to improve this, but make sure that it's aligned to achieving high results for kids. And that's what we have to keep in mind. Anything that we do, and we say we're an innovative leader, has to be with student achievement in mind, and it's time, it's come for us to look at our practices to make sure they align with high achievement. So we want to thank our campuses that are innovators, stepping out there to take this on, and really find a way to even make it better. So principals, we appreciate you for taking on that challenge, and in the end, all of our students and all of our district will benefit.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Agenda item 2B, consider all matters related to the preliminary 2011, 2012 general fund budget. Dr. Burns?
Mr. Chaffin, members of the board, you know, we, we love this time every year when we get to talk about budget. We especially love it when the legislature's in session. That was a little bit of a lighthearted humor in it, but obviously, we're a little-
sarcasm is what that was.
Yeah, that may be. We're always a little concerned when, when the legislature's in session, and, and probably more so this year than ever. It's just been, it's been all over the map, and you've read the news, you've seen what has been stated in there regarding school funding. So certainly, we are concerned, but we're bringing you information tonight to give you some comfort about our present situation, but nonetheless, give you some challenges about the future projections that we're hearing from the state. So, Mr. Hyatt, you want to say anything before we get over to Ms. Halsey, or are you ready for her to go?
We're ready for Ms. Halsey.
Thank you very much. We have some good news to share tonight. In spite of the legislature meeting, CFB holds the line on costs while improving student achievement. That's our headline. We want to talk about our improved student achievement. In the last 10 years, we've had some demographic changes. In the current year, 10-11, our economic disadvantage percentage is 60%. And 10 years ago, it was 36%, and that change is about 81% over that period. Our at-risk in the current year is about 46%, and 10 years ago was about 32%. And the change in that is about 56%. So we've had some huge swings in our demographics. But let's celebrate our increased student achievement. In 9-10, we're a recognized rating from the state. We have 16 exemplary campuses and 18 recognized campuses. In 6-7, we were academically acceptable, we had six exemplary campuses and 15 recognized. Costs are held in line even with district and state mandated raises. And what I want to show with the next few slides is whether the state mandates that we give a raise, or whether we decide that we can afford to give a raise as the district, those costs are embedded now in our per pupil cost from now on. And so, over time, there have been raises given, and those costs are embedded in our per pupil costs. So let's start. With 2011, the district provided a 2.5% raise for all employees. In 2010, the state mandated a $1,309 raise for what we call the Fabulous Five. Our teachers, librarians, nurses, counselors, and speech pathologists. Also, the district gave the non-Fab Five 1% raise. In 2009, we had a 4.5% district provided raise, and a 3.5% raise to the non-Fab Four. In 2008, the state again mandated $425 raise to our Fab Four. The only difference between Fab Four and Five is they added speech pathologists somewhere along the line. The district provided a 3.5% raise on top of that $425 to our Fab Four and to the non-Fab Four. In 2007, the state mandated a $2,500 raise to the Fab Four. On top of that, the district provided a 2.25% raise to the Fab Four, a 5% plus $500 raise to our auxiliary folks, and then a 5% without the $500 to the administrators. Still going further back in time, in 2006, the district provided a 4% raise, 2005, a 3.75% raise. In 2002, the state mandated a $1,000 raise, and the district provided on top of that a 5% to that Fab Four, a 4.5% raise to administrators, and a 5.9% to all other non-Fab Four. And I believe this is the last one and a half. In 2000, the state mandated a $3,000 raise to the Fab Four. The district provided on top of that to that same Fab Four, $1,000. And then we had a 5% to exempt, and this was a long time ago, 8% to the non-exempt. So our costs are held in line even with state mandated and district provided raises. More expensive to educate students, and higher academic standards, the standards continue to go up. Our operating costs per pupil for 2010 were $7,581 per student, and 2009, $7,568. Now, the reason that we were able to hold the costs that close in line is because we have been making district reductions. And although this list that I'm fixing to go through is not everything we've done, these are some of the high points. We've been knowing that we're going to have to have this stormy weather coming for a while, so we've been working on these reductions. In 4-5, we converted to Dallas County schools for bus transportation. We changed from a block schedule to a traditional six or seven-period class schedule for our middle and high schools. We, at that time, offered an exit incentive for all teachers with over 25 years' experience. We eliminated library technical support aides. We reduced our night security. In 6-7, we reduced the general fund tax rate from $1.50 to $1.35 for $100 of evaluation. And there's more. In 7-8, we further reduced that general fund tax rate from that $1.35 down to $1.4, which is where we're at today. In 8-9, we converted the district from our self-funded health insurance fund to the state teacher retirement active care system. In 9-10, we returned our pre-kindergarten half a, to a half-a-day program because the state only funds us for half-a-day. We increased our secondary class size and our teaching load to 28. We increased our fifth-grade class size to an average of 27. We reduced some assistant principal positions. We reduced sick leave and annual buyback programs. We reduced central administration position, reduced curriculum and instruction division. We reduced the technology division. We reduced outside maintenance, outside security operations, or all security operations. We reduced assistant and learning center managers. We reduced some non-mandated summer school programs. We reduced our standard part-time positions and overtime. We reduced English as second language instructional facilitators. And 10-11, we consolidated- In 10-11, we consolidated the Montgomery campus with the Blair campus. We closed the community learning complex pre-kindergarten center. We did some additional summer school reductions. We continued the administration reorganization. Well, because of all of those significant reductions, let's look at what happened to the staff between 8-9 and 10-11. We've reduced 119 teachers, or 6.54%. We've reduced 25 administrators, or 16.23%. We've reduced 43 educational aides at 16.32%. We've reduced 60 auxiliary staff at 7.62%. The overall reduction is 239 positions over this time period, or 7% reduction. Let's look at our administrative cost ratio. You see in the newspaper a lot about having too many administrators. They're talking statewide. That's what they think. Texas Education Agency gives us an administrative cost ratio standard. It is based on your enrollment. Because our enrollment is around 26,000, we're in the 10,000 and above category. We're allowed 11.05%. In 9-10, the ratio that was reported to TEA was 6.17. Our current ratio is estimated about 5.79. Now, let's look at the 9-10 budget. What were our actual operating expenditures? And this pie chart, like all pie charts, are a little hard to see, but the main thing I wanted you to tell, you can't read that, Mr. Shore?
I can't.
The main thing I wanted you to see is the big chunk of instruction. Now, the next thing is, the next chart is the exact same thing in a chart basis, but it's still kind of hard to see. So we've invited a special guest to come help us look at our costs, to get a feel for what does our budget, what do our expenditures really look like? So this is Mr. Rod Stewart, you know, also known as Budget Boy. And Mr. Budget Boy shows us that our instruction is-- is 57.32%. The body of our work is what? Instruction. It stands on the legs of the following supporting fields. And in fact, if you added, some of these supporting categories are instructional-related. If you added all the instructional-related with instruction, you would be over 75%. So in Mr. Budget Boy's right leg, we have instructional leadership. Then, would you point out instructional leadership over there? Then we have--
Go, Bennett.
I think he needs a laser pointer.
Thank you.
It's the orange bar.
Light leg goose.
I might not have a job tomorrow. Library is our next category. Thank you. Then we have staff and curriculum development, which we've been talking a lot about, different curriculum grading policies tonight. Then technology. And then we have administration. Then we have our utilities and security and healthcare. And our feet, of course, on both sides, are our transportation. Now, let's move to the other leg, please, sir. We have guidance and counseling. We have extracurricular, food service, and then maintenance. And that is our Budget Boy helping us to understand where the dollars go. Thank you. Now, we have--
You almost want to clap. Good job, Mr. Hyatt. Good job.
Clapping works. Okay, now, we want to talk about our ERG performance.
Thank you, Ms. Halsey. I'm going to let Mr. Hyatt begin this because it's a tool that he really likes because it has a lot of financial analytics in it. But the thing that we're going to concentrate on when he finishes is the academic piece of that and how it relates to it. But I'm going to give him a little bit of the time with understanding the financial side. So, Mr. Hyatt?
Sure. This is a tool, and it's a tool that's been around in Texas for a few years and developed by a group out of Houston. It's the Education Research Group. And it's really come to a more highlighted, accepted tool to evaluate school performance just in the last few months. And it all, it related to the state's development of their own analytical tool to develop and analyze school performance. And a lot of our state legislators kept referring to and discussing this one. We had seen this some years back, and back in an older version of it, it was much more cumbersome and much more expensive. But in the newer version, now that technology has evolved a little bit, it's a little bit more usable. So with Dr. Burns's approval and encouragement, we've begun using this tool just recently to do some analysis of our operation. And it's a tool that blends both financial operations and academic performance, using a regression analysis to layer that on top of the local demographics and student populations that individual school districts have to deal with. We're not going to go really deep into the tool tonight because this is a very complicated, very deep tool. But this is the headline page. If you sign onto this, this is a web-based application. You can sign onto this website. And this is the headline page, and you see a graph with four quadrants on it. And the four quadrants are, have a X-axis that is labeled financial performance and a Y-axis that has academic performance. The structure of this graphic are such that the lower and farther to the left on the graph is the better performing school districts. Closer to one in either, on either axis is the higher performing. And the farther you move to the right is poorer performance financially. The higher you move up the graph, the lower performing you are academically. And this, this, this graph is not based on pure, real numbers. It's based on difference from the regression line on a regression analysis. So it does take into consideration the differences between school districts. The dots on the map are the 200 largest school districts in Texas. So those, those are, probably represent close to 85% of all students in Texas, even though it's only about 200 of 1,200 total districts. Those 200 dots, the one, you see the number in each box. There's a 1-1 in the lower left-hand bottom, lower left-hand box, and a 4-4. Well, 1 means the, it represents the lowest box for academic performance, which is the best. And the right 1 is the lowest number for financial performance, which is the best. The star on the graph is your own Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD, based on this analytic tool. Just barely inside the 1-box for financial performance and candidly, well inside and low in the, in the number 1-box academic performance. Frankly, when we were, when we first saw this tool and saw where we fell on it, we were extremely pleased with where we fell on it. I won't take any Dr. Burns's thunder, but honestly, there's lots of dialogue we've had. Being the cheapest school district in Texas is not our goal. Our goal is to be efficient, use the resources of this district appropriately, but use what we have to get the best performance we have. Academic performance is our goal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hyatt. And let me just maybe illustrate it a little different way since we've already had Mr. Stewart here with it, who's, he'll be available for autographs later if you want.
And pictures.
In pictures. But if you look at the left side, the vertical, High Academic Performance Index, you will see Dr. Mayer's picture. Okay? If you look at the bottom one, you'll see High Financial Performance Index, you'll see Mr. Hyatt's picture. Okay? So we have these two forces working together for a common goal in this district of high achievement. Mr. Hyatt reminding us is we only have so many dollars to spend, and Dr. Mayer reminding us that those dollars have to be spent wisely. Wisely with the most return on student achievement. So as you see, as those converge, then in this district, that star represents us, okay, in that 1-1 quadrant, translates to overall, when you combine academic performance with financial responsibility, the district ranks 11 out of the top 200, or the largest 200 school districts in the state of Texas, 95th percent of time. And that is certainly where we're, where we want to be in terms of financial responsibility. It's not where we want to be in terms of academic performance. We want to be at that bottom line, number one academically. But let me just give you a brief history. Last year, we were also number 11 in overall performance when you combine academic performance and financial responsibility. The academic side, we dropped a little bit. We were 15 out of those top 200 the year before. We were 17 this last year. Our goal, you know it, high achievement, means that we want to be number one in the Academic Performance Index. That's where our focus has to be, within the means that we have on the financial side. So we, we hope to see that star go downward, okay? As well as, if not, go further left, but it certainly maintains its own position. Now, let me just give you a few other tidbits about where that star is located. That star is located in 1.1. There are only seven districts in 1.1, in the 200 largest school districts in Texas. Only seven. We also, of those seven, okay, only two that are outperforming us academically, those two, we have a higher percentage of economically disadvantaged students than they do. Okay? I'll also tell you that out of that quadrant, there are only two school districts that have a higher academic performance that spend less than we do. Okay? We know who those competitors are, and we know who we're going to pay in the final four next year. Okay? We know. And that is our goal, guys. And I will tell you about this. It levels the field. It levels the field because it takes into consideration your district's demographics and the percentage of kids you have economically disadvantaged, and the market indicators of the region in which you are located in the state, which drives cost. So it levels the playing field. It helps us compete everybody, against everybody on the same field. Okay? And so, not everybody can be number one. There's only one. That's where we want to be. And that is our, I guess, commitment to this board, commitment to the community, is that we'll continue to do everything we can to make that academic performance indicator be number one, but still stay within the 1.1-box of financial responsibility. Okay? And let me just give you a preview of things to come. Board members, we will be working with this tool rather extensively in the fall when we review our strategic plan, when we set our performance targets. It is a very, what we think, robust performance management system. And so, we'll be looking at our strategic plan and our four objectives and aligning the performance measurements that we see there and setting our targets for the future for the district. And so, we will use that as a tool to help us continually improve and, of course, reach our goal. So again, we're certainly happy where we are located, but we'll not rest until we are located in the number one academic spot. Ms. Halsey?
Thank you. Okay, and 11-12 budget, let's talk about the latest legislative news. As you know, the state still has a deficit. There's lots of different ideals about how large that deficit is, but I think it's safe to say it's $20 billion or more, depending on various whoever you ask. There's numerous proposals that we've seen. We get one about every day that gives us an estimate of what we will have to endure once the budget is set. Third-party estimates for the CFP laws is between $15 and $44 million. And for those of you that do not know, if the state has a deficit and school districts are 44% of the state budget, then we will have an impact. Some discussion about relaxing certain district mandates, such as the 22-to-1 student-teacher ratio and the K-4 grades that would help us some. There's some other things they're discussing, but nothing is final yet. When we talk about resource allocation for the 11-12, our current budget estimate, without taking into account the state reduction, which at this point, we don't know the exact amount, without a compensation increase, we have a deficit of about $3 million. But the important thing about this slide to remember, all those budget reductions that we showed you earlier, that work continues. We continue to identify areas where we can reduce, as long as we keep instruction as our number-one goal. Our academics has to be the goal. And to drive that work, we like to keep in mind what Robert Marzano and Timothy Waters have to say. The board knows that we used this quote when we did our boardwork study on resource allocation in February, but I think it's important to read again. "High-performing districts ensure that the necessary resources, including time, money, personnel, and materials are allocated to accomplish the district's goal." In our case, we have one goal. This can mean cutting back on or dropping initiatives that are not aligned with district goals for achievement and instruction.
Thank you, Ms. Halsey. I want to just say a couple of things. Again, I want to thank the board for their governance and wisdom the past few years because, you know, people ask me all the time, "We don't see in the paper, we don't see you saying you're going to cut X amount of positions on it." We have done that, guys, for three years. You've done that. With your guidance and your direction to us, we have prepared for this storm better than most, maybe. And so, we're certainly celebrating that, and we're certainly providing comfort to our staff out there that they don't have to worry about next year. And that's due to your foresight and your wisdom in the past and to some very strategic, diligent reductions that we've made and managed to make those and still maintain high achievement. Okay? And that, that is our goal. That is our purpose. Now, that's the good news. The bad news is the state's not done. And so, although next year, we believe we can handle a pretty heavy storm, I don't know that we can handle a tsunami, but we can handle a pretty heavy storm. But 12-13 is going to provide a challenge for us. And that last quote you see up there, "This can mean cutting back on or dropping initiatives that are not aligned with district goals," that's a given. Those will go. The sad thing is there will be some things dropped that do align, but we can't afford. So our challenge moving into the future for 12-13 is to leverage our best practices with the resources we have to continue to maintain high achievement. And right now, you know, Mr. Hyatt, I think the last time we looked, $30 million? 22 to 30 million might be?
Right. The, the last printout, and it was actually just for the House version, just came out yesterday, I think it was, is a $20 million reduction for next year and a $36 million reduction the following year.
And as, and as I stated, we can handle next year, but that next year is going to require some more reductions that are going to be very painful. And again, we'll have to deal with the cards that were dealt, but at the same time, we must not forget our goal, and that's to continue to provide the best instruction for our kids so they continue to achieve high, high marks in achievement. So we'll entertain any questions about this that you might have regarding the budget.
Mr. Shore?
It's not a question, but it is an observation to prove that I was awake during at least one board meeting. The graph that I'm surprised we're not seeing is the one that was shown a couple of meetings ago. It had different color lines reflecting different groups of kids. And it showed that all of the academic achievements from every single group was improving and that the gap among, among, between the groups was narrowing. And my recollection was that that performance was occurring during the time that we'd been utilizing these budget reductions. I think that's a testament to the, to the district.
Those guys out there.
And, and that's what I'm surprised that we didn't see. We know that because we see that. Okay? And so, while we're-- And so while we're essentially compressing what we're expending, we are getting better performance. I think that's an accolade to the district.
Absolutely. Ms. Webb, excuse me.
I had a question about the last work study we did. And we talked about what losing that money means in terms of personnel and that type of thing. And I also remember saying that we, we're not really going to look at too much of this until June.
Well, as soon as we know what the state kind of gives us a number, then what we want to do is, is work aggressively with staff. Probably we'll have a, a really early budget work study next year, like in August or September, to be working on the 1213 budget so people can plan. So if we're going to impact lives, we want them to have as much notice as we can.
I just want to make sure I understand this completely. Next year, we're not really, other than through attrition, we're not looking at reducing personnel or programs next year.
Okay.
Until the following year.
Well, through attrition, no, no mandatory RIF, but through voluntary attrition, through natural attrition, through some reorganization alignment, yes, we're going to try to reduce some positions, but we're not, like you've heard about other districts saying that they're giving notices regarding instituting the RIF policy. We are not recommending that to this board at this time. Okay? Depending on what the state does, and depending on the number, and depending on how much natural attrition and how much we can get for next year, we hope that's not the case that we have to have for 1213, but we want to bring it to you early if we do.
Okay. So just one more time. We're not looking at it for 1112?
We have no, we have no forced RIF policy for next year. Okay? That's not to say that we will, we may have to have it for 1213 if we don't get the natural attrition and the right, I guess, reorganization that we need to absorb those costs in 1213.
But with our rainy day fund, we have enough not in land or anything else. We have enough to cover everything we've got this 1112.
Pretty much, you know, again, depends on how big the storm is. I mean, if they hit us with a 50 million, we'd be in trouble, but 20 million, probably okay.
None of the numbers that we've heard out of Austin would be so devastating next year that we couldn't absorb it for one year. Honestly, you guys have been really great to follow and understand the financial implications of what's going on, the fact that we've done a, Bonnie's illustrating our fund balance. We've done a good job of accumulating some resources in the past. We've been, we've been financially prudent in the past. And because we do have some excess resources that we've accumulated, we can buffer this problem and allow ourselves and our staff a year to try to acclimate and make some adjustments. Frankly, I think that's a very, a much healthier approach than trying to, between February and June, make 10 percent or more changes in a school district.
Yeah, exactly. And thank you, Ms. Webb, for illustrating that because that really has been our position for next year, is to minimally impact anybody negatively. There will be some negative impact. You know, we won't, we're not recommending any compensation increase, and there will be some cost increase that occur to people. So, you know, the net of that is they will lose some. But in terms of the, the actual positions, we want to absorb those for next year through our fund balance, but we wouldn't be able to do that for two years. And I think that's the key point.
Right, because we have to have it for two. So then, like you're saying, next August or September, we would have our...
Start early.
...budget meetings. And then would we start saying at that point, we are cutting X amount?
We would have to be at that time. Once we know the state's number, then we would be able to more define what that equates to in terms of people and positions and what, you know, places that we think is the least impact on student achievement that we could take it from. And that's, that's the concept that we would frame it all around, is what are the things that, everything has a, some impact on instruction, or we wouldn't be doing it. But there are certain things that have a bigger impact on it, and those are the ones we'd want to maintain that are getting our achievement.
They would have, people would have, employees would have kind of a heads up.
Give them as much notice as possible, yeah.
I, I understand you can't give everybody what, who's going to be going and not by Christmas or anything like that, by any means, but like some positions and estimates.
But we'd try. I mean, that would be, that would be a reasonable timeline, we'd be able to try to do that before December or November. You know, at least, almost, the notice that it might, and if we don't get the attrition, so that people have that time to plan. So the earlier the better.
At least they have the ability to make some better life choices around their finances. Let's not buy a big new house. Let's not buy a new car or take a big vacation. Okay?
A couple of weeks ago, I went down to Austin as part of a public policy group, and we spoke with several legislators, and we spoke with Rafael Anchiya, and we spoke with Juan Plano.
Shapiro.
Yeah, Florian Shapiro. And they're pretty much, their mindset is that, you know, this is pretty much the sign of our times. I mean, it's, this is, this is what we're going to be experiencing for a while. And, you know, they want to show, and as far as money being thrown at education, you know, they're, they're at the point now to where, you know, you need to show us where, you know, that it's going to be a given that we're going to get better results if they put more money at it. And so, you know, and their, their thinking is that, you know, they're strapped, but there's no, I guess, no data to support that if they put more money to the districts that they're going to have a positive, a positive outlier as far as grades and graduation rates. But if you take a look at the economy, me working in tax for 18 years, if you take a look at what's going on, on the federal level, you know, you've got a lot of companies that are, that are incorporating out of the United States because the United States has a 35 percent tax rate, as opposed to you go to Europe and the tax rate is like 12 to 15 percent, depending on what country that you're in. So we've got at least top 600 companies that are headquartered over there in Europe, you know, because they're paying a 15 percent tax rate as opposed to a 35 percent tax rate if they're here in Texas. And that, and that equates to a $1 trillion in tax dollars a year federally. So that, you know, that, that's a loss that we have on the federal level for one year. So you take that out the budget, and then you got to look at what the states are doing. The states, you know, they, they're enticing these companies to come here, and they're giving them tax abatements. You take Shell, for instance, Shell and, Shell down in Houston, I think the tax abatements for a four-year period is $26 billion that they don't have to pay property taxes on. So take $26 billion and put that back into the basket. That's a lot of money. And then locally, you know, these cities are bringing in companies, enticing them for tax abatements. You know, that wasn't a big deal 20 years ago, but that's, that's what it is today. You know, you got to make it lucrative for those companies to, to come here. And, and the thinking is, is that they're going to bring, they're going to bring jobs. You know, they're going to, they're going to employ the people in our city. So, and that's just a sign of the times, and that's, that's where we are now. So that kind of helps you understand everything on a global level, on the federal level, and as well as the local level.
And the, the other thing that we need to consider on our budget specifically is, ordinarily, the legislature closes in June. There is probably a very realistic expectation that they won't be through with their work and that there will be a special session, so we likely won't know the complete outcome of what we're going to have to deal with until July, possibly later. So, were there other questions? Mr. Goode?
Dr. Burns, just a point of clarification. You've indicated that 2012, 2013 is a more serious issue for us. What I'm trying to understand also, the rest of the school districts in the state of Texas who have been identified as a critical issue in education, are they taking measures now to cover a two-year period or just this one-year period? So I can understand what these other school districts are going to look like a year from now.
Right. Well, Mr. Goode, that's a really good question. Certainly can't speak for all of them. I think that, again, everybody's situation is, is different, but I believe that, that what we looked at three years ago and beginning to kind of foresee the future, we put some things in place. I think for some districts, they're now, it's just now starting that. That process is beginning for them, but Ms. Halsey showed you for the past few years, we've been doing. If, and because they didn't do it soon enough, they were forced to maybe do it next year, you know, through a mandatory RIF policy. I believe it's going to take them two years as well to, to absorb those costs, again, depending on what happens. So, you know, I don't know for each one, a lot of it would depend on their fund balance. Ms. Halsey has up there about ours. If it, if it doesn't have as much cushion in it as ours, then they're forced to make more thing, more cuts for 1112. If they have a little to absorb the impact, then they'll probably take an approach that we have and said, "Okay, let's, let's figure out what the legislature does. We'll, we'll absorb 1112, and then we better get very aggressive on how we're going to handle the 1213," because the legislature won't meet again, so there won't be any money coming in. We will know, when this legislature finishes, what the outcome is or the damages for 1213. So in some ways, that's at least giving us more lead time than right now. So it just really depends on where the district began to plan and where they have in terms of reserves. So, Ms. Halsey, you want to point out that for the, for the audience as well as the board?
Just, just to reiterate, we like to keep 60 to 90 days of fund balance because we have to operate several months before taxes begin coming in, in December and January. Right now, for the year we're currently in, we're projecting having about 115 days at year-end, between, around that. If we get down to 60 days, then there's a possibility we might have to borrow money in the interim to make payrolls or vendor checks. And so we would like to keep the 90 days. Now, at the last presentation, we, if you recall at the work study, we had a couple of models. One was with, we kept the $1.04, and, and at that time, we were projecting at $1.04 with no compensation increase. Again, the $3 million deficit, so that's the same as I presented tonight. That would leave us with a fund balance around $61 to $70 million, depending on how this year hopefully finishes. We also told you at that time, if the state were to reduce us $26 million, that was the number we used, then that would give us 110, would give us 63 days. Then...